Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the August 4th, 2014 Morganton City Council meeting. We will resume our business now at this time, and I'd like to call on Forrest Fleming, our city councilman, to lead us with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much, and please be seated.
At this time, Pastor, I'm going to call on you, Reverend Burt Williams of the North Morganton United Methodist Church, new to our community, and I want to welcome you here. And I go way back with your church. I've been there many, many times, and it's a great group of people.
Thank you, and thank you for this invitation.
Yes.
May we pray? Gracious God, we are grateful for this opportunity to come to be about the work that you have given us. We ask your blessings upon our city, upon its citizenry, and especially upon this council this evening as they come to weigh matters that are important to the business of this town. We know that every decision made affects a citizen, affects a person, and so we pray that they might find justice and mercy in each decision, and so that they might make decisions that are wise for our entire community, remembering always that it affects the one. We ask that you would continue to bless them and to bless all the employees of the city that carry out the work that has begun here this evening. We pray for the protection of our public safety officers and police and fire and all the other employees that help us to live in this community in such a way that is a blessing to us. And so this evening, we entreat you to be present and to watch over all the proceedings that may be carried out as such as your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and I know you probably still have boxes to unpack. You can leave any time you would like, okay? Okay, thank you. Introduction of our city council. On my far right is Ronnie Thompson, city councilman; Forrest Fleming, city councilman; Louis Vina, our city attorney; I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor; Sally Sandy, city manager; Sidney Simmons, city councilman; John Cantrell, city councilman; Kelly Russell is recording secretary; and Becky Brinkley interpreting for our deaf community. Thank you again for all of you being here, for all the public safety presence, for their well-being and their safety on their job. Thank you a lot. We've got two retirees, and I'm going to start out by reading the resolution honoring Vicki Farish. Vicki, whereas Vicki R. Farish was employed by the city of Morganton as a permanent part-time records clerk in the public safety department on April 17th, 2000, transferred to full-time records clerk in the public safety department on January 5th, 2004, changed to customer service representative on July 1, 2004, promoted to administrative specialist on March 27th, 2006, whereas Vicki R. Farish has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the public safety department and has given of her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 14 years, 7 months; and whereas Vicki R. Farish retired from the city of Morganton as administrative specialist in the public safety department on August 1st, 2014; and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Vicki R. Farish and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Vicki R. Farish adopted this the 4th day of August 2014. Mel Cohen, mayor; Sally Sandy, city clerk. Make this an informed motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Vicki, would you come to the podium? Got a bunch of checks for you, Vicki.
Okay.
You want to go out and help spend those things?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Resolution honoring Johnny R. Cooper. Johnny, you just hanged it. Okay, you're there, all right. Whereas Johnny D. Cooper was employed by the city of Morganton as public safety officer trainee in the public safety department on January 30th, 2003, promoted to public safety officer in the public safety department on June 25th, 2003, promoted to public safety officer special assignment, K-9 handler on August 5th, 2005, transferred to public safety officer on February 10th, 2014, and whereas Johnny D. Cooper has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the public safety department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 13 years, 4 months; and whereas Johnny D. Cooper retired from the city of Morganton as public safety officer in the public safety department on July 1, 2014; and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Johnny D. Cooper and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Johnny D. Cooper adopted this the 4th day of August 2014. Mel Cohen, mayor; Sally Sandy, city clerk. Make the informed motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Johnny? And I'm going to go ahead and take care of this while you're coming up there. We need a motion to present you with, yeah. I'll make a motion to declare surplus the Glock Model 22 forty caliber pistol, serial number CZ6858, and fire services helmet to sell and present to retired PSO Johnny D. Cooper.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
And I'm paying the dollar. And it's mine, don't listen to him.
Thank you.
Johnny, it's the first time I've ever seen you with a dollar.
I'd just like to thank everyone in the city for the opportunity to be able to work at public safety. I've had a very good career, a very demanding career. The biggest thing I'd like to say thank you is there's a couple of groups of people I'd like to say thank you to, and that's of course to the city officials that I didn't come into much, as much contact with. But I would also like to thank each member of our department for their support and standing behind me, and through no matter what the events were in my career. And the most, the person I'd like to thank the most out of all this is my wife, Chris, for standing behind me and bringing me to this point in my life. So, thank you.
And Vicki, are you letting her go too?
Yeah. of service. Chief, you're the first one I need to call.
Twenty years for Ronnie Rector, our chief, director of public safety. Thank you. Kenny, Fleming, in the water resources department, 25 years.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Jim Beattie, that's three years, isn't it?
Yeah.
We're giving him three years now. Thank you for what you do, all hours. Thanks.
Okay.
Good job.
I'm going to thank all of our employees that have got their service pins tonight, and valuable people. Public advocacy issues and strategies, I'm going to start out by talking about and asking Dee with the COG to come up to the microphone. He's going to present the Great Places Main Street Award. And you sure you want me to come up there?
As long as you don't kiss me, mayor.
Well, you know, you might want the Main Street director.
I was going to make a few remarks if you wanted.
Go right ahead.
You can pucker up. All right. Mayor Cohen, members of the city council, city manager Sandy, attorney Vinay, Morganton city staff and citizens watching this broadcast, it's my pleasure and honor tonight to represent the 1,500-plus members of the North Carolina Chapter of American Planning Association as a spokesman for the 2014 Great Places Initiative, including the Great Main Streets and Great Public Places Award Program for Excellence in Planning. This is the North Carolina Chapter's third annual Great Main Streets and Great Public Places Awards Program. It received over 50 nominations spanning the state from the mountains to the coast for three different categories of awards: Professionals category, Great Main Streets; Professionals category, Great Main Street in the Making; and the People's Choice category, Great Main Street. The program's ultimate goal is to celebrate great places in North Carolina, recognize the hard work that went into creating them, and provide examples of successful places to the rest of the state. As the chapter's press release said, anyone who has enjoyed the classic charm of a main street or spent time in a public place at a festival or relaxing in the shade of an oak tree on a courthouse square knows intuitively when it's in a great place to be. Great places bring people together and act as the heart of the community. On a personal note, many of you may not remember, but I came to the council of government in 1974, and one of my first responsibilities was to help write and administer Morganton's first HUD Community Development Block Grant entitlement program. Ed Wyatt was your city manager then, and the program goals for the first two, three years were improving the city's infrastructure and, I believe, some projects at the housing authority. Since then, I have seen the downtown grow, develop, and become the people's choice of a great main street award winner it is today. Morganton's citizens, visitors from the county and region, and your frequent host of tourists are all fortunate beneficiaries of this city's goal of making its downtown the best it can be. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to present you with this award, and let me read you what it says, for those listening. As part of the Great Places in North Carolina Initiative, the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association hereby designates East and West Union Streets, Morganton, as the people's choice for a great main street in the North Carolina, 2014. It was the top vote getter voted on by the citizens of this state. It's signed by Emily Beddingfield, AICP; Jason Burdette, AICP project managers; and Ben Hitchens, AICP, the president of the North Carolina Chapter of American Planning Association.
Very good.
Well-earned, Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just say a word or two. On behalf of Sharon and her department, her new assistant, who came from another main street town of Roxboro, North Carolina, this is a great honor. It's an honor for our citizens in the community and other communities. I know there were votes coming from Charlotte and other towns across the state. It is a great honor to be voted this, and it takes a staff of wonderful, wonderful people in the city of Morganton government to make a main street town and to make a successful main street town. Again, I want to thank you, thank you, Dee, for coming all this way. Appreciate it. Upcoming at Kama, August 7th, Amber Hayes on the back porch; August 22nd, Pam Tillis, main stage, first main stage event for this new season. Again, that was, and it's a great season coming up, Bill. Public information workshop, this half-a-day public drop-in workshop scheduled for August 28th from 12:00 to 7:00 PM is intended to be open to citizens, property owners in downtown, all over the community, developers, business owners, and others to view and ask questions of the staff and consultant about the newly drafted zoning ordinance that they've been working on for months. We will have maps, section of the ordinance, and computers available for the public. This is not a public meeting, it's a public informational meeting for people to come and view their areas of where they're intended.
Not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing.
It is a public meeting.
Okay, not a public hearing.
And you may know where that is, Mr. Mayor.
In this room.
Yes.
In the council chambers here, by the way. Sharon, you want to come to the front? Historic Morganton Festival, September 5 and 6.
Well, I'm going to introduce Abby, since you just about did it for me. This is Abby Gentry. She does come to us from Roxboro, North Carolina. She is our new community events coordinator, and she is a graduate of Appalachian State University with a master's in historic preservation from UNCG. So, we are thrilled to have her here. She's going to be, like poor Beth was five years ago, trial by fire when it comes to the Historic Morgantown Festival, but I have every confidence that she is going to do a fabulous job, and we look forward to it. We met with a television station this morning, and she did a great job, and I think they were so busy looking at her, they were like, "Yeah, we'll sign you up for your station, you want a show." So, it was a good day. The Historic Morgantown Festival is September 5th and 6th this year, and I know this is the last council meeting, and I appreciate, I think everybody in here has signed up to work except for Ronnie. We'll take care of that tomorrow. But we, we're excited about it, and I will say this, because, well, first of all, Mel wants me to make sure. Dustin Lynch is the big country national singer. He's on Saturday night. And Casey James is Friday night. He is, of course, from American Idol. We also have on the Coors Light stage the Carolina Soul Band, and we're excited about that. They're a huge TGIF performance, and people begged us to bring them back, so they're the big hit on Friday night. Of course, we have the kids on, the kids' stage, 250 craft vendors, you know, we're ready. What I am most proud about is that a lot of festivals, you know, they start out with the goal of bringing people to towns, and I will say that this one continues to do that, and we have been visiting television stations, and we've done six. And this has been a huge year for us, because we go, we sit down, we talk to them first, and make arrangements for them to do the PR, you know, and then we send people to actually talk to them. And I will tell you that every one of them could not have been nicer. They want to be in the community. They're actually going to send some folks. Larry Sprinkle will be in town Friday morning of the festival to do the Weather Live. The Fox, excuse me, not Fox, my apologies, WSPA, if I got that right, WSPA wants to hopefully send a crew in Saturday night. So, and then also Greenville. I mean, you know, they run the 30-second commercials for us. And folks, that may be promoting the Historic Morgantown Festival, but that's promoting downtown Morganton and coming to see this area, and for that, I am very proud. And the state student managers know us, their PR people know us, and so, yes, I'm very proud that we are a great main street. And I have to say one more thing, I've got to give a lot of credit to Beth Willard, Patton, who is not with me now, but she really pushed for that main street vote and really got the word out through Facebook and social media, so I wanted to say a big thank you to her. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to also say continuation of the farmer's market on Saturday morning from 8:00 to 12:00, and then also uptown on Wednesday on the corner of Green and Avery Avenue from 2:00 to 6:00.
Six.
2:00 to 6:00. All right, a notice that joint planning and city council workshop, that's city council members, Thursday, September 11th, 2014, at 3:00 PM in these council chambers. And then also, there'll be a video right now, I guess, of the fire engineers. Is it a video? We'll show the public right now.
It is. Well, could I say like an intro maybe?
You're right.
We obviously provide a lot of services, and one of those services is the fire services that our public safety officers provide along with our fire engineers. And there's a lot of questions from time to time about what do those guys do? And so, we thought it would be a great feature, and we're trying to do more of this so that people can learn what everyone does and how we all do our jobs here and how we deliver the services that ultimately our citizens enjoy. And so, this one is about our fire services, and would like for you to get to see that now.
Fire service duties are a lot different today than they were 30 years ago, and the city of Morganton's fire department is a lot different than almost every other department across the country. The city of Morganton operates what's known as a public safety department, which combines police and fire services into one agency. Under the public safety model, officers serve as police officers and firefighters. In Morganton, if you call the fire department, public safety patrol officers are going to show up because they are our firefighters. If a building catches on fire, public safety fire trucks and patrol cars are going to arrive on the scene because they make up our fire department. To help speed up the department's response to fire calls, public safety employs four fire engineers per shift and a fire services captain. Those engineers are stationed at three different locations. The primary job of a fire engineer is to drive their fire truck to the scene of a fire call as safely as possible. That means that fire engineers must take their trucks with them when they go out to take care of routine work. The fire engineers also handle the majority of the routine, day-to-day fire service duties. In addition to driving the fire trucks, the fire engineers maintain the fire trucks, maintain fire equipment, including pumps, ladders, hoses, and breathing air packs, clean and maintain the public safety stations, create fire response pre-plans for local businesses, churches, and schools. Currently, the fire engineers have more than 1,400 locations in Morganton that they have to pre-plan, and there are more than 1,100 fire hydrants that must be maintained, 20% of those which must be flow-tested every year. The city of Morganton uses the public safety model, and that means our department must allocate our manpower differently than traditional fire departments, and the department staff use the city's fire service equipment differently as well. In a traditional fire department, one fire engine would be staffed with at least four firefighters. That unit is called a company. That company works together to perform routine duties, and they all ride together in their fire engine. But it's a bit different in Morganton. In Morganton, there is one fire engineer per truck, so if three or four people are needed to do a job, then the engineers take three or four fire trucks. Fire engineer Danny Lyle said residents often wonder why fire trucks are out and about in the city and why two or three fire trucks may be at one location, but that is the consequence of being a public safety agency. Some people may think it's an overkill to have three or four fire trucks at one location, but that's just how the city public safety department is set up. Many times, if a fire truck is at a business, a fire engineer is doing a pre-plan for the business. During the pre-plan, the fire engineer gathers information about utilities, electric service, natural gas, emergency exits, building size, and water flows, so that public safety can be better prepared to respond to a fire or emergency at that location. The public safety department is required to do a pre-plan on a business once a year, and with 1,400 locations, that keeps the fire engineers busy. The pre-plans help improve the city's insurance rating, which has a direct impact on what homeowners and businesses pay for insurance, not to mention the safety for emergency response personnel. In addition to regular duties, fire engineers must complete many hours of training and respond to day-to-day calls for service. Public safety must offer 48 hours of training per year to every officer, and every member must maintain a minimum of 36 hours of fire suppression training annually. Public safety officers also have to complete a minimum of 24 hours of law enforcement training each year. Many times, the department will have several fire trucks out in the field while conducting training exercises. Between training, completing pre-plans, maintaining equipment, and maintaining fire hydrants, as well as answering fire calls, the fire engineers keep themselves and their trucks pretty busy and very active in the community. But they don't mind. It's what they've signed up to do, and it's what they want to do. Whether a citizen calls about a fire alarm or carbon monoxide beeping, or they want public safety to help perform a home safety survey, or if they just need help, public safety is ready to answer that call with proficiency and professionalism.
Very good. Excellent. Chief, it's an excellent, hopefully you'll take it to civic clubs and other groups. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and we plan to play that on Channel 2, and then hopefully, as time goes on, to do several more of these that highlight other services.
Very good.
Good information.
Power agency?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we change our September date due to Labor Day to the second Monday of the month, which is, what's the date?
It'll go from September 1st to September 8th.
September 8th. Are we having a motion? Second?
To clarify, that's to change the meeting date of the city council.
Change the date? Okay. Okay.
Just to make sure.
Just to make sure, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda, Sally.
Okay, the consent agenda before you tonight has four individual items included, and the staff considers those to be non-controversial and asks that you consider those in a single motion unless someone would like something removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, there are three sets of minutes. The regular meeting held on June 2nd, a closed session held on June 2nd, and special meeting held on June 23rd. Tax releases in the amount of $2,032.49. A professional services agreement with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to provide Phase II stormwater assistance for fiscal year 1415, and then declaring the 1997 fire truck as surplus equipment that we just replaced so that we can sell that.
A move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second? I have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, new business, Sally. Consideration of purchase of public safety vehicles.
The consideration before you is to purchase eight public safety vehicles, that's seven patrol cars, and then one car to replace the chief's car. Those are included in our budget this year. You are being asked to consider replacing those with a contract. It will be Dodge Chargers, and that is with Butler Dodge, which is in Beaufort, South Carolina. They are changing, the 2015 models will be redesigned, so the price is going up on those. Butler is selling these at the state contract price, so we are getting the 2014 cars. They are currently available. We'll be able to take delivery of those quicker. The cost per vehicle is $22,965, for a total of $183,720, and you will be asked to consider financing those with an installment purchase contract. But this is just to approve the purchase of the cars.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of eight 2014 Dodge Charger police cars from Butler Dodge, Beaufort, South Carolina, at a cost of $183,720.
Second? Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A consideration of award of an installment purchase contract, public safety vehicle, Sally.
Sent request to five banks, received two responses back. You see the two, BBNT and SunTrust, there before you. The lowest responsible bidder when we are considering the fees is BBNT at a finance rate of 1.69%, and the total amount of the financing will be 200, I'm sorry, $407,620. That's the $183,720 for the purchase of the vehicles, and then $233,900 for the equipment and the outfit.
A move.
I move we award an installment purchase financing contract for public safety vehicles to BBNT at an interest rate of one point six-nine percent for a period of three years.
Your second.
Second.
And motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration of repainting the city hall water tank Sally.
The landmark water tank located outside of city hall, if you have looked at it lately, you know that it is definitely in need of some repair. It suffered through the winter and we've had a considerable amount of degeneration in the finish-up there. We asked utility service company who does the maintenance on the water tanks within our water system to climb up and take an inspection. What they found is that there are several areas where it's down to the metal and that it does need repair. They've given us two things for consideration. There is lead paint on that tank and the long-term solution would be to take it down to the bare metal, abate the lead, and then refinish the tank and that's at a price of about two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars. And we have not set aside in this current capital budget that kind of money for this. They propose an alternative which they would clean and spot coat some of the corroded areas and then overcoat the existing tank with a new covering of paint. They feel like this will buy us some time and allow us to plan for the larger expenditure. They would also apply the Morganton Trading Company logo back onto the tank that was on there before. Their quote is for fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. We do have a current contract with them, recommend that the initial funds for that, if you choose to go that route, would come from the tank maintenance funds and then be reimbursed as revenues from a future cell tower that's slated to go up there to pay that back.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve and execute the proposal from the utility service company to perform the exterior repainting of the city hall water tank and apply Morganton Trading Company logo at a cost of fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Discussion.
Yes, please. Sally, the, the cell tower that will be put up there after it's done should not cause any problem with the new paint job, correct?
No, and we have talked to them about that and they would prefer to do the paint job before that attachment is up there and that would make that go smoother and we wouldn't have to damage the paint job.
Is that, that cell tower, is it gonna be one of those where they're gonna have to have a, a equipment stored in, uh, parts of this building possibly?
In the front part of the building, we, we have signed a lease with Morganton Trading Company for that equipment in the part of the building that I described, the brick part closest to the water tank.
No problem with that though with the Trading Company?
Should not be.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is consideration of technical assistance grant, offer and acceptance. Sally.
We are entering into the Brad Water Resources section of our agenda tonight. In April of two thousand and fourteen, you adopted a resolution that allowed us to apply for a grant known as a TAG grant, which is a technical assistance grant. And we applied for that with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources and have been notified we have been successful in that application. It is for fifty thousand dollars. And with this grant, we're gonna collect data, do engineering work that will investigate the sewer lines in the Bethel Sewer Basin and allow us to be able to prioritize future repairs and some of the sewer rehabilitation work that needs to happen in that area. This, just for information, because I think it's important, a large portion of Hunting Creek is within this basin and as you know, Hunting Creek is an impaired tributary. And hopefully, over the long term, by assessing some of this and then actually planning and doing some of the repairs, we can help that situation. So we have to do a couple of things. We have to adopt a resolution to accept this grant and then we have another item following that.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution, accepting a technical assistance grant and to execute the offer and acceptance documentation.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration of selection of an engineering firm for engineering services and administrative activities related to the Bethel Sewer Basin Investigation Project Sally.
This is step number two in, in this process. In order to continue with processing the grant and to be able to ultimately get the funds to spend from the state, we have to have an executed contract with an engineer that's gonna do the work and the engineering firm recommended to you based on qualifications that were received is WK Dixon. And so this is a, a request to approve a contract with them.
I move to approve a contract with WK Dixon Engineering Firm for Engineering Services and Administrative Activities related to the Bethel Basin Sewer Investigation Project.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Please, Mayor, this, this will not do any repair work. This is just to tell us what may need to be done, correct?
That is correct. This will actually help us with some other things, which is your next item, to assess in the area, the infrastructure, the condition, what is happening and then we will prioritize and come back in future capital programs. Every year, you know, we're doing some sewer line rehabilitation, some manhole rehabilitation. And so this will help us prioritize in this particular basin how we need to go about that.
Okay, we, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What was the age of the, the water line that burst up in UCLA, early nineteen hundreds?
It was ninety-eight, almost a hundred years old.
Yeah. Consideration of professional services agreement with Red Zone Robotics and Bethel Sewer Basin Investigation Sally.
We have been working with these folks for the last couple of years and that is part of our assessment process. They are able to go in and basically take pictures, if you will, and assess the condition of, of the lines. And this is a contract to do ninety-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four linear feet of lines in the Bethel Sewer Basin. That covers approximately a hundred and twenty-five manholes in the system. And hopefully, that will give us some information that will allow us to plan actually to do some of the implementation and some of the repair work and upgrade work in this area. The contract that you're being asked to consider is for a hundred thousand and forty-nine dollars and these funds are budgeted in your capital budget.
I move we approve a professional services agreement with Red Zone Robotics in the amount of one hundred thousand and forty-nine dollars to perform sewer line inspection and condition assessment within the Bethel Sewer Basin.
A second. Any discussion?
Yes. I saw on Meeting Street about two weeks ago, down near what used to be the Burke Dairy, that looked like a space getup. Was that this Red Zone group?
State your name and where you reside.
In the sewer.
No, what you were seeing was the manhole rehabilitation. That was Carolina Management Team. We actually contracted with them as well. This is their second year of, of going into the sewer basins, assessing the sewers, prioritizing the sewers that need to be replaced. A lot of the, the manholes in that area are old, so they basically went in, cleaned up any of the brick material, any of the grouting material that was deteriorating, and completely recoat them with some type of a polyurethane, urethane coating. So that'll, that'll allow those manholes to, to function up to their standard for several years into the future. But that was not Red Zone. Red Zone is, and I think I have a few, a few pictures that you definitely were wanting some pictures. So you asked for it, here they are.
You've done that to us before.
Yeah, well, just, just a, just a little background. The, this is the assessment piece. They're not gonna be repairing anything. It's, the analogy is kinda like taking your car to a repair shop. You know something's wrong, you just don't start tearing the engine down. You basically do some diagnostic, go in, see what's wrong first, where it is, and decide on what you wanna repair or you may wanna defer. These, the picture right here you see are an example of the solo robotics, robots that we're gonna be putting into the manholes. They're about twenty-five pounds, they're battery-operated, so they're very easy to deploy. Put them in the manhole, close the manhole cover, allow them to travel the distance between the sewer line between manholes. So they're, they're pretty easily deployed. This is a, a deliverable that we get. When we see something like this, this is obviously a pipe joint, a clay pipe, sewer pipe, that's a deposit of sediment. And what has happened is some of that dirt and earth and material has come through that disjointed pipe. Sometimes we have, as the earth shifts, the sewer pipes will shift in the ground and become misaligned. That allows for inflow and infiltration. Anytime it rains really heavily, a lot of that water will get into the sewer pipe and will also bring in some sediment along with it and that causes blockage issues. This is an actual sewer line you can see up at the top where there's a complete big section of the clay pipe missing. And that, again, allows for sediment, water that we don't wanna have into our sewer system. We don't bill for it, but we have to go through the expense and effort to treat that water. This is an act, this, what you see here is a, two pieces of pipe. You can see the early stages of root intrusion. There is a crack there, there is a jointed, piece of jointed pipe there where the roots of surrounding vegetation are actually growing into the sewer line. This is an, another example of some root intrusion and this is a little more advanced stage. You can see off to the, to the left there. This is a, a section of sewer pipe that you can see the bottom is completely eroded out, so anytime it rains, water's gonna come in. And there is a very advanced stage of what we call root intrusion and that, anytime it rains, it just takes a little bit of material to get stopped on that and that's where you have the sanitary sewer overflows backs up into the system. So those, that's just a taste of what, I think that's a bad word.
You used the wrong word.
That's a sampling of what Red Zone Robotics will be providing us to make and prioritize.
Brad, how, how long's it been since we've done this?
Um, I think it's probably been about twelve years ago where they, and, and we continue, we have our own camera that we do some periodic assessment with. It's just that it takes a lot of man-hours and a lot of, a lot of time. Red Zone, that's all they're doing. They, they're coming in with two people and they're covering fifteen, twenty miles of sewer line in the matter of weeks where it would take us a year to do that. So it's been, it's been ten to fifteen years since we've had a lot of intense camera activity in our sewer system.
Very good. Thank you.
Brad, since we had the fire engineers, is this gonna be a future video for us? Is, is that planned?
We're working on it. I told Chad, he, he wanted to show it tonight, but we're gonna hold out and we're gonna get into the Bethel Basin and bring you some video a little later on.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is, um, consideration to sell approximately, no, that's not.
No, Brad Steele. We're at the Clearwell.
Yeah, consideration of approving proposals for Carolina Management Team for rehab and repainting of Clearwell Number Four and residuals holding tank, residual holding tank.
We have moved from the waste treatment system to the water system. So we are talking about the storage tank and then the residual holding tank. The Clearwell, the, the large storage tank was built in nineteen ninety-six, the residuals tank in nineteen eighty-five. Both structures are structurally sound and in good condition, but their protective coatings are breaking down as they do over time. And Carolina Management Team, who Brad just talked about that we've done some work with, has given us a quote because we need to repaint and resurface those. Fifty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars for the Clearwell and the residuals holding tank for fifteen thousand and twenty-three dollars. Funds coming from this year's approved CIP budget for a total of sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six.
Make a motion to approve the proposals from Carolina Management Team to perform the service of rehab and repainting of Clearwell Number Four and the residuals holding tank at the water plant at a total combined cost of sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Second. Motion second. Discussion.
I think, I, I think we're kinda getting in line now with water and sewer, trying to do some catch-up because I think in past years, I think we all realize that we haven't done that much in past years in, in maintaining our equipment, especially down in, in the, at sewage disposal plant. And I think along with the freshwater too, that we, we kinda need to stay on top of this so that we don't get behind with, with our water system like we have with our sewage disposal system. So I hope we'll all keep that in mind and, and keep this at the forefront and keep this maintenance up so that we don't get behind.
About four or five years ago, you all decided that we would take on projects like this and like some of the finished water and the things that we have done out at the water plant and bite those off in smaller pieces, albeit a fairly aggressive capital plan that, you know, we are trying to go after so that we're doing that all along for us. You're exactly right.
Well, I, I know when we start, I shatter when we, I read through these things and I see that we're proposing to spend a hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars. We're talking about a lot of money, especially to an old country boy that never had much money. So I shatter at this, but I realize too that if we don't do this, then we're gonna be spending millions of dollars like we have in the past several years. So I, I'm glad to see us doing this.
Thank you, Forrest. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, consideration to declare surplus and to sell approximately one acre of public property located at seven oh three, oh five, and oh five, North Green Street Sally.
The city has received a request to consider selling this parcel of land, these two parcels. It's about one acre and again, located at seven oh three and seven oh five, North Green Street. It is some property that we acquired back in nineteen eighty with the redevelopment commission that existed at that time. We don't currently have any use in the near future for that or really in the long-term future for the property. Tim Truitt of CMTT Properties LLC, who just did the new realty office at the property adjacent to this, has made an offer to purchase this property. He has submitted a bid of twenty thousand dollars. He has deposited the five percent cash escrow with the city attorney and would like for you to consider declaring it surplus. We would advertise the, the sale of this property for the ten days, giving time to receive any kind of upset bid. If we receive none, if you move forward with this tonight, we would ask that you also allow, if we receive no upset bids, the staff to go ahead and complete the sale process so we don't have to bring it back to you at a future monthly meeting.
What is?
Obviously, if we get an upset bid, then we're back in that process.
What's the current zoning of that piece of property?
It's currently, if I may respond, I believe it is currently residential. However, that could well change if the zoning were amended as you'll be addressing this fall. I, I don't know what plans the owner may have for it because it fronts on North Green but also is accessed by the cul-de-sac that's part of the, the redevelopment commission property behind it. However, it would be a condition of the sale that the access only be from North Green, from the street.
And there, and I, I know that you all have, have been out to look at that. There's a fairly significant utility.
Yes.
Storm sewer located on that property. Rendering quite a bit of it not really usable.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution declaring approximately one acre of property at seven oh three and seven oh five, North Green Street as surplus public property and authorizing the city clerk to properly advertise for upset bids and according with Article twelve. A to properly advertise for upset bids and according with Article 12 of Chapter 160A of the North Carolina General Statute and further to evacuate the sale upon completion of the process.
Second.
I'm motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Last items are, well, second's the last item. We have several appointments of people. One is Fireman's Relief Fund Board. And I'd just like to make them rather quickly. Karen Duncan and Public Safety Appointee John Campbell. Those two have expired, terms have expired and I could reappoint both of them to a new term. And if here are no additions, we'll.
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Cable television. Cable television. Wait a minute. Cable television. We have sometime we needed a member from the deaf community in Audrey Garvin, who is the Director of the North Carolina School for the Deaf. Like to make a motion that we appoint her to the term to expire June 1st, 2016.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Also like to add a Freedom High School person to the board and Kaylee Lane, Horizon Senior and Student Body President be appointed for the 2014-15 school year. Making form of a motion. Freedom High School.
Second.
Our motion second. Any additional nominations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Board of Adjustment, George Bailey. I'd like to make him, it's hard to get people to serve these days. I'd like to make a motion that we accept George Bailey, who is at 138 Mimosa Hills Drive, to go on the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Human Relations Commission. Commission recommends the following be appointed. And Karina Lee is a Patton High School student. She's recommended for the appointment to fill a current vacancy on the Human Relations Commission. Her term will be for the 2014-15 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Last item on the agenda, consideration of a loan to Brown Mountain Bottle Works LLC from the revolving loan account. Sally.
You'll recall that several years ago now, time goes so fast, we were the recipient of a Main Street Solutions Grant. And one of the things that we did with those dollars was set up a revolving loan program that would allow us to loan money to small businesses in downtown for outfit and them getting started or expanding. At the time that we did that, we said that we wanted, we were the only one in the state, I might add, that did that as a revolving loan. The state had wanted that to be done just as an out-and-out grant, but we felt like doing it as a loan would give us opportunity to recollect payments and then to continue the program and to be able to help other businesses. And we have been doing that. This is the second request that we have had since we did the initial round of loans with the state money. This is Brown Mountain Bottle Works. And I know we have folks in the audience tonight who are here for the business. We have Jacob Suddles and Colin Suddles, and they are asking for $25,000 to help with the renovations and the outfit that is bringing 117 East Union Street up to code, to meet the fire code and the requirements for this type of a business in that space. Brown Mountain Bottle Works will be a retail store that's going to specialize in local, regional, and national craft beer and wine, offering a selection of those products, local products, also growing to develop an internet business there to set up and sell supplies related to the homebrew industry and classes and have tasting events. And that's a touch of the business plan. You've had a summary of the business plan and a full packet available for review. We do have more than $25,000 in our revolving loan program. So we have $25,000 available to loan. There is a personal guarantee that goes along with this loan. And the loan documents and the program will follow the same requirements as the original loans that we set up.
Would this be two motions?
Yes.
Yes, it would. If you choose to go forward and approve the loan, we will also need a budget amendment because those revolving loan monies are sitting in there. And we didn't know at the time we put the budget together, we'd have a request.
Make a motion to approve a loan in the amount of $25,000 to Brown Mountain Bottle Works LLC from the revolving loan account.
Second.
So motion second. Any discussion?
This location, it's 117 East Union.
It's actually.
115. But it's one of those buildings that used to be Buren's. Okay. And I see in some of the write-up that you will have a location at the back for, in that alley, or is?
We're actually repurposed. We've been back there a little bit.
Okay.
They've been out there.
What's your timetable?
We were shooting for the historic Morganton Festival, but hell of the tide and sky go. But probably some sort of timetable.
Good.
You have a contractor, you have students, 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 you have